Good evening. Today's Monday, July 21st, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. And item agenda A is city updates. Brian McCain, Chief of Staff, five-minute presentation.
Thank you, sir. There are two positions for a community business leader to serve a two-year term on the Pueblo Homeless Commission. You can apply now on our website at pueblo.us. Pueblo Parks and Rec, Steel City, Arkansas River Festival, Scarf is a free community festival this Saturday, July 26th. From 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We saw the presentation on it last week. Multiple events take place throughout the day located at the Nature Wildlife Discovery Center, the New Water Works Park, and the kayak course near Pillars Park at the Arkansas River Levy. Pueblo Transit is providing free shuttle services at Main Street Parking Garage, the City Park, and Pillar Park throughout the day. The slab grand reopening, join Pueblo Parks and Rec Colorado Lottery. Visit Pueblo in the Greater Pueblo Chamber of Commerce for the ribbon cutting and grand reopening of the slabs at Elizabeth Street Parkway on Thursday, July 31st at 1:00 PM. 10 for games, ice cream, skill challenges, prizes, and more. Pueblo Parks and Rec K-12, K-12 School Supply Drive. Items needed included notebooks, pens, pencils, erasers, crayons and markers, rulers, backpacks, binder, folder, calculators, glue sticks, and scissors. We have two drop-off locations at El Centro at 609 East Sixth Street, or Parks and Rec Main Office at 800 Goodnight Avenue when you get inside the park there. And it's Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Some police department updates to go with the ComStat data that the mayor sent to council earlier today. Pueblo PD officers wrote six curfew violation citations in the parks over the weekend. Three weekend, three adults and three to minors. The youngest was 12 and was out at 12:20 AM. Pueblo PD officers have written 66 loitering citations since April of this year. The self-initiated calls for the patrol division were up 27% over the prior week, this week. On Friday of last week, officers rearrested the man who broke into the downtown bar twice. He currently remains in jail and on a $10,000 cash security bond. Officers were able to detain one of the frequent motorcycle dirt bike riders that has been witnessed driving dangerously throughout the city. He was charged with reckless driving, engaging in exhibition of speed, operating an unregistered vehicle, displaying fictitious plates, and operating a motorcycle without a motorcycle endorsement. Investigation into the shooting of a team downtown last week continues. Pueblo Police are following several leads and encourage anyone with information to contact Detective Medina at 719-553-3296, or submit your tip anonymously via Pueblo Crime Stoppers at 719-542-STOP. Reminder to plan, the plan to attend the 2025 Neighborhood Safety Night, August 2nd from 4:00 to 8:00 on Allen Hamel Avenue. And then I wanted to update council on the cleanup efforts directed by the administration throughout the city from both Mike Purdy, who works with the Community Service Cleanups, and Barbara Alvin, who does the team up to cleanup and along with the Catholic Charities. Mike, this is from the beginning of the year. Mike has been focusing significant time and effort to stemming the growing problem in Bessemer. It has taken him and his team two weeks just to get a handle on the alleyways and streets from Elm to Ormond and Mesa. This week, in the next two weeks, they will be picking up from that area and continuing west. So far for the, this year of 2025, Mike's team has done a total of 53 homeless camp cleanups throughout the city. This includes on the Fountain River. Just in Bessemer alone, there were 28, which was 53%, or just over half of the total in the city. He does a lot of graffiti removal, so if you see him out there with the power washer, he actually now has a laser that takes the graffiti off that we're all kind of excited about, but the graffiti total for the city is 17,996 lines this year. So a line is basically, if you imagine a two-by-two, two-and-a-half-by-two-and-a-half-foot square, so about this big of solid paint, that counts as one line. So if you stretched this out, it would be a two-and-a-half-foot wide box that is eight-and-a-half miles long. So that's how much graffiti he's just removed this year. The two main areas that they've been focusing on, focusing on is actually the east side in Bessemer, which up until this year, they've been neck and neck about 50/50 with the amount of graffiti. Actually, Bessemer has gotten worse this year where he's, so far this year, he's hit 5,246 lines, which makes up 29% of all the graffiti in the city that he's cleaned up. And on the east side, 4,157 lines, which is about 23% of the graffiti that he's cleaned up in the city. And then the rest of it, it's hard to narrow it down, but imagine the rest of that, just kind of around anywhere. The east side is showing some signs of improvement this year, but it's being overshadowed by the increase in Bessemer. And then just from our team-up-to-clean-up team, including Catholic charities from July 1st, so this is only this month, past three weeks. This is what they've done so far, mostly in the Bessemer area and the east side. 9.41 tons of trash, 2,859 needles, which they don't really count individually. This is just what they're cleaning up and putting in there. 211 tires they've picked up and 75 shopping carts, and that's only since July 1st of this month. So that's not even the yearly. I'm trying to put together everything to get their, their yearly numbers more located where it's at, what the amount is to you for the year. So as I track that, I'll be sending it out to council just to let you know what's going on out there. And unless you have any questions, that concludes my update for the night.
Council comments, questions? Joe, is that you? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody? Okay. That's it. Anybody else? Okay. Now, let's go to item Agenda B, the CAE, Pueblo Training Center update. It's going to be presented. Mark, excuse me, Yak, you can come up here and make sure you turn the mic on. He's the Director of Flight Training, Pueblo Training Center, and I have a little bit of familiarity with this operation, so it's all yours, buddy.
Thanks, sir. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the invitation. I'm glad to be here today and update you on what we have done here since 2006 and where we're going next. As Mr. Gomez said, I'm Mark Mariac. I'm the Director of Flight Training at the Pueblo Training Center here at the airport. Most people who have met me over the last 17 years just know me as Yak. I'm the guy that leads the flybys. So if you're, if the Veterans Day flyby or something like that, look up. You'll see me, I won't see you. Uh-oh. I killed it already. Oh, thank you. I just didn't know where to look then. All right. CAE, I'm going to talk a little bit about CAE at large, just for some context that will lead into some of the other things I'm going to cover later. We, our North Star, our reason for existence is that we exist to make the world safer. We, we offer solutions for military flight training, civilian flight training. The big thing is prepare aviation professionals and Defense Forces for the moments that matter. And really, we are, we have become internationally a trusted partner in safety and mission, preparing them for safety and mission readiness. Important here to note, you'll see that there's civil aviation and defense and security, both represented by CAE. Civil aviation is going to become important to us as we look to the future. We are international, 40 different countries, most notably about 48, I'm sorry, yeah, 48% of what we do is right here in the US, and that's both civil and military flight training. So CAE Pueblo Training Center, this, this began back in 2006 as an effort to provide flight training for the US Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coalition Partners. That is what we have been doing since then. For those of you who haven't seen our facility, we sit on a 48-acre campus. We pride, we have taken a lot of pride in building up our instructor cadre. A lot of prior military aviators are training these young military aviators for their Air Force careers. We have 62 aircraft, DA-20s, so we're a fairly large fleet doing a lot of flying out here over the years. And strong collaborative relationship with Pueblo Airport. I know Greg's here. And we have letters of agreement with Pueblo Airport, Colorado Springs Approach, Pueblo Approach, Denver Center. We have, we have had a lot of success partnering with those people to provide safe, efficient flight training for the US Air Force and Coalition Partners. And so we began back in 2006, as I mentioned, doing, first it was introductory flight screening, then introductory flight training. A lot of people who know about our program know us as different names over the years, but the program has remained the same with the same people executing it. Like I said, conducting flight training for US Air Force officers, Marine Corps officers, and international students. Over the years, we have put 25,000 aviators into the US Air Force, so 25,000 Air Force pilots started their careers right here in Pueblo. We were approaching a half a million sorties. Two years ago, we went over a half a million flight hours. We operate at 15 different airfields, so basically our flying area stretches from Fremont County to Garden City, Kansas, to Raton, New Mexico, to Greeley, Colorado. We are all over the front range. So looking ahead, the Air Force is looking for something different from industry now. The training that we have provided has set these students up for success and the careers that they were moving on to. However, the Air Force needs more. They need more training from industry to get their pilots through the next phase more rapidly. The good news about that transition is some of the constraints that we have had to operate under prevented us from doing other things at this facility. So now that those constraints are being removed, we're looking at diversifying, we're looking at doing more for the community of Pueblo and, and other partners out there. So I'll get into that briefly. First thing, started Jeff Shaw, Chato Hazel Baker, and I started talking a little over a year ago. We want to stand up an airframe and power plant mechanic school on our site in, in coordination with PCC. That when I say airframe or power plant, just think airplane mechanics. Those are good-paying jobs that would serve the youth of Pueblo very well. More recently, I talked with Gail Mackin at CSU Pueblo. She is interested in that program, also interested in the program to open it up to private pilot certificate, instrument rating, and other types of pilot ratings for folks right here in Pueblo. In addition to that, I mentioned the civil side of CAE. Down in Phoenix, there's a school that trains airline pilots. They, they partner with airlines. They take these, these students from zero flight time all the way through their CFI rating, and then they pass them off to these airlines and they become airline pilots. As, as we partner with that team from CAE Phoenix, their ability to take on more airline training is quickly diminishing. So they asked me two weeks ago, hey Yak, if I came to you in six months or a year and ask you if you could take on an airline, yes, we can do that here. So those are the first two big opportunities as we look forward at the future. The other thing is building on Pueblo's international presence. As the Air Force is making this transition from what we have done to what we are going to do for the Air Force, some of the Coalition Partners want to go a different route. The German Air Force has already reached out to us, and we are finalizing an agreement with them to provide their training. Additionally, as the German Air Force comes, they're going to drag other Coalition Partners with them. So we will, we will quickly move from, from what we have done for the US Air Force, Marine Corps, and a small number of Coalition Partners to significantly larger groups. So 2006, Pueblo Training Center was a gateway to Air Force aviation. We are rapidly moving towards the gateway for global aviation training. Why can we do that? The weather here is awesome for VFR flying. The airspace is uncontested. We, we pretty much own the majority of what goes on at Pueblo Airport and the surrounding areas. Our building was built for this purpose, to provide flight training. And then we, we have developed a strong pipeline of how do we get qualified instructors in here to execute those programs? Also, we are very proud to be a neighbor here in the home of heroes, and we do a lot of things out there that, that are meaningful to us. The one that's up there now, that was last year's back-to-school drive. We started that one to, this morning. We have, we are engaged with a lot of the leaders around here, yourself, PEDCO, PCC, Chamber of Commerce. And so 17 years after, after arriving here, I, I've found a new home, and I don't plan on going anywhere. We are happy that this city has been such a gracious host to us and glad to be part of the home of heroes. Having said that, I am now standing by for questions. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, council, any questions? Councilors.
Thank you for that presentation. When you made the transition from the previous, and I don't know if it was really a previous company or whether or not you just changed your name, could you explain how that happened and why that happened?
I, yes, yes, sir, I can go through that. This is, CAE is the fifth company I've worked for since I showed up in 2008. And, and all of those were, they were business decisions made by those businesses at the time. The first one sold us to an investment company. Not, not necessarily greatest time for us. We, we had a lot of challenge with that, challenges with that. And then L3 bought us from that investment company, and then L3 merged with Harris. When L3 bought us, it, it, the decision was, was sound. They wanted to get into the training arena. When they merged with Harris, they were, they kind of reversed course and went back to, hey, we want to, we want to build products rather than provide flight training. So CAE, every time that this program had been sold, CAE had tried to purchase the program. And it wasn't until this most recent acquisition that CAE was able to do that.
So you're a profit-motivated company?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And, but there was, during all of these transitions, going back and forth, the government did change the rules, didn't they? And it, it appeared that they were looking at a different model, I guess is a way to say that, a different model than what was done with the previous company.
There, there were a couple of subtle changes, and, and now we're facing one that's much more significant. So that initially, we were initial flight screening. The, the real job for our program was to prepare them and motivate them for military service, but also to determine who prob, who does not have what it takes to succeed at the next level. About seven years ago, the Commander of Air Education Training Command was here, and he, his vision was different. He said, I, I want you to just motivate them and train them, and if you can get them through the program, I want them to get through your program and have a shot at the next program. Now, as we look at this much more significant change, we're going from a program where we keep them here for about seven weeks to a program where we keep them here for about four and a half months, and really build a huge, strong foundation for them as, as professional aviators.
And then you mentioned something about an airline. What, what, could you add something?
Some context, yes, sir. So what, what CAE Phoenix does, these airlines will go find candidates that they are thinking, okay, this, this seems like a good person who can make it through this training and, and become an airline pilot eventually. So the stepping stones for that, first they get their, these are ab initio. They have no flight time for the most part. So that first they'll get their private pilots, then their instrument rating, then their CFI. Most of them will, I don't think many of them actually get their multi-engine rating, but that is one thing that the Air Force is, is asking us to do as part of our program. So, so CAE Phoenix will get them through all that, and then they will fly them as certified flight instructors, CFIs, to get the hours that they need that make them eligible to become airline pilots.
Well, as you know, I, I think, you know, Pueblo has a lot of amenities, and one of them is our airport. And it's gratifying to know that you recognize how valuable our airport is.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm elated that, you know, you're, seem to be growing out there. And you have a lot more, it appears to me that you would have a lot more training hours as a result of our airspace not being so overwhelming. And so I, I think that is a plus for your company, and I'm, I'm just hoping that there'll be other spinoff companies or spinoff ideas, I guess, within your company of how we can utilize the airports to its fullest, because I think right now it's just the tip of the iceberg, just because of, well, we have a nice airport, and we can land any kind of aircraft. So it just seems like there's a huge opportunity in that area, and I know that several city councilmen are involved out there, hoping that that will, you know, that will happen.
I, I agree with you on, on both points. The reality is that had this airport not existed, we wouldn't be here. The, it is very difficult to find training space in the continental US and very difficult to find an airport that can handle the amount of business that we've thrown at it since 2006. I also think that the partnerships that we've built and, and the ideas that we are walking our way through right now, it's the field of dreams. When we build it, they will come.
And how many employees do you have?
Currently, we're, we're a little low because we're, we're winding down a program before we start the next one. We're at 179 right now. Our, our high point was about 220. As we get into this next program and start to capture more of the market share from the Air Force and some of these other programs, then we'll, we'll blow past 250, I'm guessing, by next summer or late, or fall.
I think I speak for the whole community. We're so happy that you're here, and we want to be a city that you could be proud of, and if there's anything, any kind of opportunities that you see, let us know. We, we would be anxious to capitalize on those.
Thank you. Come fly with me. Roger will tell you I'm safe.
Yeah, President Aw.
I had the good fortune of last year going with the mayor and the Chief of Staff and Jeff Shaw. We spent a morning out there. And I remember when I left, I thought, my goodness, how crazy it is that I didn't realize, you know, in the previous time that, that I was here, how extensive and, and how incredible that program is that you run out there. I don't have any questions. I'm just saying that, that, that it's a blessing to the community that you guys are a part of it. And I'm looking forward to the future because I know that you guys are always looking towards the future. And some good things are going to happen out of this. Not that they're not good things now, but I mean, even better things.
Yes, sir.
And, and I just want to say hats off to you because you've been at the helm for quite a while, and, and obviously you've done a fantastic job because not everybody knows you, right?
That's fair.
But everybody knows you that you go, oh, dude. But, but I appreciate you, and I appreciate everything that you guys do out there. And, and it, it's an incredible operation, and it's first-rate. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. We're, we're very proud to be part of the community here.
Councilman Latino.
Mark, I just want to thank you as well. I represent the council and the city on, on the, on the board now. And we now have a new board chairman, and he'll do a great job. And he's got a great background in aviation and other areas. And we will be coming to this council and to this mayor with a proposal in terms of moving our airport in, in a new direction. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Boston, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was a wonderful presentation. A lot of good information in there. It's great to hear that you guys are hopeful to expand, you know, bring in aircraft maintenance here. I think that's something that the airport is definitely missing. There's more opportunity out there for that. So I think you guys creating that school, providing jobs for new individuals that can be high-paying, more pilot training. I think all those are really good things. It sounds like a majority of council is behind you and wants to help support you. So I'm assuming maybe tonight wasn't just to come and tell us what your hopes and dreams are. Is there something that we could do to help or a reason you came here to present tonight?
Well, they, they, we're largely through the proposal phase for this, for this portion. As we move forward, I, I've spent a lot of time talking with Jeff Shaw about what, what can PEDCO do for us. Keep in mind that PEDCO, you know, they partnered with us in the first bid and the second bid as we built this program up. So I, I'm working with Jeff to figure out what that, what that ask looks like and what we think's in the realm of possibility. Not, not just for the phase that we're moving into now, but as we start to do other things, where, where can we get assistance to help us make those things happen?
Thank you. Councilwoman Mestre.
I just want to thank you for coming in, enlightening the community about what's going on out at the airport and how you've been successful so far, and that if there is any further investment in what you're doing out there, that you've done good so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Good to see you, Yak. I've never seen you in civilian clothes, I don't think.
I know.
So it's exciting.
I'm in my big boy clothes today.
Yeah. Um, so for the expansion, right, of expand, like, I like the idea of training young people and kind of building that pipeline. What do you think that tangibly looks like? Not in terms of money, but like, is it expand, like capital expansion of the facility, more people, like workforce?
I, I think that initially, especially when we're talking about the AMP Mechanic School, that's just Chato Hazel Baker and I, and maybe Gail Mackin figuring out where, where's, where's the next step? What do we have to do to do that? Not a whole lot in terms of capital investment for that, I don't think, because we are partnering with, with those institutions. I think between what I have and what they have, I think we're pretty much set for that. And to be quite honest with you, the reason I want to do that piece of it is for the youth of Pueblo. We, we can really set them up for some high-paying jobs. 17 years here, like I said, this is my home now, and I, I want to do that. And, and I can convince my company that that's, that's a good idea. As we start moving to some of the bigger things, the, the real moneymakers, the revenue generators, then, then it will be, it will be capex. As we move from this first phase with the Air Force to the next phase, that we're going to have to pour some more ramp space, and anybody that's studied it knows that asphalt is not inexpensive. And so, so that will allow us frankly to capture more market share of the Air Force business. The way the Air Force views this, they know that there's no one provider that can do the magnitude of what they're asking to be done. So they've spread it out across a number of providers. I don't, I don't know exactly the number, but it's somewhere I would guess between six and nine. As we excel, like we always do and always have since 2006, it allows us to capture more market share. As we do that, then we do get into phases where we need to grow our ramp space. We may need to do some other construction to handle that business, bring in more jobs to the site, and start generating more revenue for the, for the city.
For the Trinity Academy that you're proposing, do you have a projection on the, like, number of students that would be participating in that?
My, my expectation is that initially we will get 250 a year.
Wow.
Which, which seems like a lot, but, but in busy years, we've done 1,000 to 1,200. The, the difference being that we did that number of students at about a seven-week period each. As we move forward, cut the number, but greatly increase the training from, from that seven weeks to, to four and a half months. And like I said, once we capture that, then we can just start, just start to drive up the market share that we're securing here in Pueblo.
And then my last question, Yak, is what's the average wage of a pilot?
It depends on what kind of pilot you're talking about. So the average, the average wage of an airline pilot is somewhere north of what I make, and I feel like I'm doing okay. It, it takes time, though, to get to that point, and frankly, it takes a lot of money to get to that point. Just to get through, let's say, your private, your instrument rating, and, and your, your CFI rating, your certified flight instructor rating, you were talking like $80,000. Yeah, and that's, that's, that may be on the low end. Why do people do it? Because once you get your CFI rating, you start making money for flying. And then if you do that for 1,000 or 1,500 hours, then you become marketable to the airline. That, that's the real goal. If you're, if you want to make money as an aviator, you're either joining the military and flying for the military, or you're working your way to the airlines, or a combination of both, fly for the military and then move on to the airline. Fly for the military and then move on to the airlines. Um, so it's, it's difficult for, for anybody to find that kind of money. To get over the threshold, but if you find it, uh, it's, it's a really good paying job. Uh, now, and now I'll circle back to the A and P job. That one. Not nearly as expensive to get the qualifications and, and be qualified to do that job. And they still, still pay pretty doggone good money.
Would the students in the training academy, would they? Um, be paying this eighty thousand dollars to go through that?
Um, I, I think that if we're talking about training for airline pilots like, like my partner in CAE Phoenix does. Then yes, they, they will be doing that. The, the upside for most of them is if, if you are sponsored by an airline to go through this program. Then you are guaranteed a pathway to get to that airline. Um, so, so in the, over the period of a year and a half, two years, you're going to spend that eighty thousand dollars. Uh, then you'll start making some money as a certified flight instructor. Um, but you get, you get that about two, two and a half years down the road. Then you're moving to a regional and then straight to a major and then just, that's when they start to make their money.
Thanks Yak.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be all over the board. I've got some things to say about this. Um. Uh, I think it's just so exciting, so forgive me, but. Uh, we call him Yak because that's their call name and. I don't know how else to say this, but we got our own version of Top Gun, right here in Pueblo. Um, he flies with other guys. One name is Martini, the other one's Noggin. Cause his last name is Hedman, I believe, and they called him Noggin.
Yeah.
But. We were talking at a meeting and I thought I was pretty slick and saying, well, I'd be willing to go up. What's about tomorrow, Roger? These guys don't mess around. I was in that plane and I'm telling you, if you've never done this, you need to. Um, I'll invite everybody here on coun- on council, hopefully through Yak. Take the flight. The only one we have trouble with is probably Brett because he, the canopy may not be able to close. I needed a, a telephone book to look over the front of the mine. But it's just so, it's amazing when you go out to their operation and how much time they take. And the, the planes themselves, how many was it? Sixty-two, you said?
Sixty-two.
Spotless, every single one of them. When I, when we took off and believe me, I, you know, I. I related to him, I had a brother who's a pilot and he passed. And. We flew up, I think seventy-five hundred, ten thousand square.
Seventy-five miles.
Feet. And we were going to go do a fo- fo- a for- formation flyover into the Colorado Bus Rodeo, they do those kind of events. Well, it's kind of neat. Well, you're flying and you're sitting there and I'm sitting next to Yak and here I am. And. You look at the horizon and you can see as we're coming to Colorado Springs, it gets a little darker. And I kept my mouth shut a little while and it gets darker. Dark, a couple of cracks of lightning, darker. And I think I said, don't feel obligated. So it let me know that there was also hail on the horizon. That's not very good for these planes. So we took a long trip, we came back. But I'm just telling you, the camaraderie, I haven't experienced this since I was in law enforcement. Same thing. Vinnie, you gotta go. And Clyde's got to get up on this plane because it'll just take you away. I did the morning briefing. I did the debriefing at, at the end of the day. And all I can tell you. Is this, he's way too humble. This is at our, a- at, at our airport. We have flights that come in with the C one thirties. We have a s- special runway. I'm sure you can talk to that. But I was so, I couldn't sleep when I got home. So for the last three nights I've been painting. And that's the only way I can, I, I can share my gratitude for what you gave me. So. I'd like you to come up here.
Nobody quite believes me when I tell them I can paint and I'm a muralist, but. I'd like you to unveil this and. I didn't name this airplane simply because I wanted to tell you what this plane is and if you'll notice, you got Yak, Martini. So have at it from this.
Was supportive.
Yeah, this bit, yeah. Well, I'll let you explain to them about this particular plane. I didn't use a gun in Colorado Springs.
We, we did. It's actually at, at our airport, um, our airport museum. He, uh, hooked up in Ohio, had it and, uh, they were, they didn't have anywhere inside it put it and they turned about. Skinned the aircraft, so they, they moved it down here. When I say they moved it down here, we as a community down here, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars just to get it born down, shipped here and rebuilt. Um, this is a tank killer. So after, after my first combat deployment, I did an exchange tour with the army. And our job, the airport guys in an army brigade was to, to support them, bring them home safely, right? And, uh, what's the biggest threat? Tanks. What kills tanks better than anything? The A ten Thunderbolts who were, were affectionately known as the Warthog. Um, so that was, as an early ASON officer, worked with the army, that was my weapon of choice to, uh, take care of the enemy. So that is, that is a little pull run.
Tough ass plane, this thing, they're, they were going to try to put it in lock bolts. They're taking it back out and reupping it. This reminds me of this community. We're tough, we're greedy and that's the plan. I guess you share this, the rest of the councils, you can see it. I'm just not, I got a little tough for some of them. Not that you know, but please take that.
Thanks, sir.
Share that, just share that. Give me one more favor. Make sure you go by the Wisebrook Airport, let them know, show them that, that I wasn't playing my side of the real work. Put it in there. I wouldn't stick it in their nose.
I will take care of it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll go to. The. Uh, agenda, item C, Palmer Lake Conservancy, Jolene Collins. The community engagement manager. Dylan O'Hare, the senior conserv- conservation manager, fifteen minute presentation. Welcome folks. Make sure you turn your mics on. Thank you.
All right, can we hear us? All right. And then the presentation. Hey, we are up. All right, Mayor, council members, thank you for having us. My name is Dylan O'Hare. I'm the senior conservation manager with Palmer Land Conservancy. I'm joined here with Jolene Collins, our community engagement manager. Today, we are going to be giving you a high level overview. We're going to introduce you to Palmer Land Conservancy, Pueblo's local. Land trust. We're also going to give you an overview of three of our programmatic areas, areas that I think touch on. Points that are of interest to the city of Pueblo. And last, we're going to discuss and introduce you to an emerging opportunity that also involves the city of Pueblo. So Palmer Land Conservancy, we're Pueblo's local land trust. In the United States, we're the seventeenth largest land trust with a hundred and forty thousand acres of land. Conserved and protected by conservation easements right here in Southern Colorado. Our goal is to protect land and water for the wellbeing of people and nature. And, uh, over the last forty-five years, since our founding, we've again conserved a hundred and forty thousand acres of land. I'm really proud to say that over a hundred thousand of those acres are working farms and ranches. Uh, and really specific to the farm conservation. Uh, we've spent ten years in the lower Arkansas Valley and right here in Pueblo, working to build innovative. Uh, tools and approaches to. Address some of the most challenging problems that we have when it comes to what the demand for a limited resource, water. And how that's applied to, uh, communities and the agriculture that we rely on. And lastly, we have partnered with over three hundred private, uh, and public landowners, funders and partners. And in doing so, we've partnered with over six public agencies to protect, um, public parks and open spaces. So the first programmatic area that I'd like to touch on. Is the Bessemer Farmland Conservation Project. You'll recognize this map as Eastern Pueblo County. And what we're looking at are St. Charles Mesa, Vineland and Avondale. The reason that we are here, leading the Bessemer Farmland Conservation Project is because there was, uh, a need from the community. The community came together. In two thousand and nine, when Pueblo Water purchased nearly one third of the shares from farmers on the Bessemer Ditch. Those farms are represented in the map that you can see here, those farms in red. Pueblo Water didn't need the water at the time. They were building its water portfolio, making strategic decisions. Uh, and so they leased that water back to farmers. Um. And so nothing has changed in the Bessemer Ditch. Water's still flowing, chilies are still growing. Uh, but eventually the farms that you see here in red are going to be dried up and what, it just so happens that they're some of the most productive farms on the Bessemer Ditch. And so that's where, that's where Palmer came in. Uh, we've been working here for nearly ten years on this project. And as we've gone about it, we worked to develop a new legal tool and water court that allows us to work with landowners on a voluntary basis. And optimize where water is used in light of the dry up that you see, um, on the map here. When you build a new tool and you're working with farmers who are risk averse and don't like to be a guinea pig. Uh, it put Palmer in a position where we are willing to take the chance to pilot the use of this new tool that we've developed. Um, and to do so, uh, we closed on the acquisition of a six hundred and twenty acre farm in Avondale this year. We're currently leasing it to a local farmer, a conservation partner. And the goal is to reunite this highly productive farm that's going to be dried up in two thousand and thirty-nine with permanent water shares. Um, so that when dry up does occur, this is one of the gems of farms that is not dried up in the future. Uh, when this project is successful, uh, many decades into the future, because water projects take quite a while. Uh, Pueblo Water is going to receive the full yield of water that it purchased. There's no impact to Pueblo Water and the water security of the city of Pueblo. Uh, will remain strong, but the ag agricultural community and economy can remain whole. The culture that underpins this entire, um, agricultural region will remain whole. Because the economic base will be there through the optimization of limited water resources. And lastly, there are environmental benefits that enhance the water quality, um, in the Arkansas basin. Now, this was about three minutes of the Bessemer project. I could do this presentation for about an hour. So if there are more questions on this, I'm happy to go into them. Or have a follow up. We don't just work to protect farms and ranches. We also work to protect public parks and open spaces and. Um, since we were founded, uh, nearly forty-five years ago, originally to protect the backdrop of Garden of the Gods in Colorado Springs. We protected, uh, over twenty public parks and open spaces. This is all in the Pike's Peak region. Uh, and we've partnered with over five public agencies to accomplish this goal. So we have a track record. Of public parks and open space protection. Um, and we have, we have, we have a template. We, we've done it here. Uh, we founded forty-five years ago in Colorado Springs. We've been here in Pueblo. We opened our office in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, and we're ready to take the step, take the step towards this vision that you see in Colorado Springs. To help build this foundation of public parks and open space, uh, here in this community.
As Dylan said, my name's Jolene Collins. I'm the community engagement manager for Palmer Land Conservancy. And although Palmer's been working in Pueblo for the last ten years and Dylan opened up our Pueblo office in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we've really grown our capacity here in Pueblo, including my role, which allows us to go out and do more things in our community. This October, Saturday, October fourth, we'll be hosting our fifth annual Bike the Bessemer. This is one of Palmer's signature events where we take people into an immersive experience out on the mesa. Uh, we'll be riding on a fifteen mile ride this year along farms, stopping at the Bessemer Ditch headgates to talk about water. And our work in conservation. And then we come back to enjoy a farm to table lunch. And we'll also be highlighting our agricultural producers and our makers that take advantage of the, um, local produce that we have. Grown here in, in Pueblo. When I started my role with Pueblo, um, you know, I know that Palmer really believes in community led conservation. So a lot of that is like listening and, um, being involved with the community to see what the needs are and see where we can be most helpful. And one of the opportunities that we've had, which is where I met Sarah, was to participate in the Generation Wild Initiative. It's a five-year grant funded program through Great Adores Colorado with the mission to get kids outside. And Palmer has stepped up to be the fiscal agent for that program. And we're working with the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center, which will operate as the backbone for that. And just to kind of give you a, a scope of that, there's going to be nine program partners. Um, but beyond that, there's really about fifteen network partners. So this is a large collaboration of. Folks that are interested in getting kids outside, but what I've been really blown away with, with that initiative. Is the collaborative process of it, the willingness for people to come together to figure out how we can let our young people. Enjoy the, the nature of Pueblo. And as I look around at the opportunities for Palmer as a program partner. Um, I see too, that I feel like I have the capacity to, to play with and that's bikes and birds. Um, you all know what a great trail system that Pueblo has to get around on bike. And we have, um, lots of different fleets, whether it's through CSUP or Boys and Girls Clubs. So that even folks that don't have bikes can have access to one for these types of programs. And, um, part of my role is, um, focused on equity and outdoor recreation. And when I think about getting outside in an accessible and equitable way, um, the first place that my head goes is birds. Um, birding is one of the most accessible ways to enjoy nature. And not just that, but Pueblo is incredibly special when it comes to birds. Of the five hundred and eighteen species of birds in Colorado, Pueblo is one of the birdiest counties in our state. We've. Identified four hundred and twenty species of birds. So my pro- programmatic focus will be bikes and birds with, um, Generation Wild to, to get kids. Um, outside and to give them opportunities to connect with nature. I think we have so many outdoor hidden gems here in Pueblo and we know. As a conservation organization, if we are not stewarding the next generation of conservationists. Then our work is for, is for not. So I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to work, um, alongside our community. Um, and, and see more kids getting outside. In March, I was invited to participate in the Rural Technical Assistance Program in Beulah. And this again was, uh, another one of those moments where I was really impressed by the amount of community members and organizations who came. To, um, talk about what are the needs of the community of Beulah and how do we get more folks outside? And one of the things I was impressed about this workshop, it was a two-day intensive workshop, so say fourteen to sixteen hours. Of twenty organizations working together, folks from Pueblo. Um. Pueblo County Parks and Rec, Beulah residents, uh, Grassroots Gravel, Boys and Girls Club, Conservation. Uh, organization. So really like, uh, they did an excellent job of making sure that all of these voices were in the room. And we worked together over a series of days. Looking at maps of Beulah and the opportunities there and hearing the community say that they, they want more people in their community. They want them to enjoy Pueblo Mountain Park and all the beauty that it has to offer, but they're also. Uh, very cautious that they don't want to change the sweet character of that, of that town. And so we looked at all of the, uh, assets that Beulah has. We played with maps. We had posters all over and we, we were. This was facilitated by the Masters of Environment Program at the University of Colorado and they did a really, really brilliant facilitation. And I don't give out those kinds of compliments often. And as we were coming together to see like, what are the priorities of this group at large? There were two that rose to the top. They were conservation and conservation. They fell in the two buckets of conservation of Pueblo Mountain Park and conservation of private land owners in the Beulah community. So this was one of those aha moments in my, um, time working in community engagement for Palmer Land Conservancy where I said. We are hearing from our community that there is an ask for conservation for these areas. So I mentioned this over to Dylan again and talked specifically about the conservation opportunities that we saw through this program.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jolene. So the Pueblo Mountain Park, as I'm sure you're all aware, is a six hundred acre gem. Uh, in Pueblo County, right on the outskirts of Beulah. It's publicly accessible. It's owned by the city of Pueblo and managed by the Nature and Wildlife Discovery Center. The city of Pueblo purchased the Pueblo Mountain Park, the six hundred acre parcel in nineteen twenty. Um, this was a time when life was tough. Um, especially in a blue collar working town. And so the, the acquisition of this property, of the construction of this park. Was really an opportunity to create Pueblo's backyard, uh, to give people an opportunity to get out of the city, to get into the mountains to a safe and an accessible place. Pueblo purchased, uh, the Pueblo, Pueblo Mountain Park in nineteen twenty for six thousand dollars. Six hundred acres for six thousand dollars. That's ninety-four thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five dollars. But it was an absolute steal and that's, and so Pueblo purchased this property and made a commitment to the community to. Create this space and to ensure that it's been, that it's continued to be here for generations. It's been over a hundred years since it, the city purchased this property. Um, and as we look at what the conservation of the Pueblo Mountain Park is, is it's ensuring that the Pueblo Mountain Park is here for citizens of Pueblo. Not just for the next generation, but generations to come, the next hundred years. And so when I talked about our track record, Palmer's track record in, in terms of protecting public parks and open spaces, the tool that we have used. Are conservation easements. And that's the discussion that we would like to have with you as a city council. Is to, we'd like to explore what it means to put a conservation easement on. On the due diligence looks. The due diligence looks like for that, what the result means, what the implications are of this process. As a senior conservation manager, I lead conservation projects from the inquiry stage to the closing stage. And so this is an area where I have, do have expertise. And so that's, that's the ask today, is that we are able to have this conversation with the group and with you all individually, to answer all the questions that you have. And to give you the information that you need to be able to make a decision at some point in the future about conserving the Pueblo Mountain Park. And ensuring that the commitment that the city of Pueblo made in nineteen twenty is remain steadfast in twenty twenty five and for generations to come. So I'll end right there and uh, open it up to any questions that you have.
Counselors, anybody? Councilor Tinas?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation, Palmer. Um, I don't know what a conservation easement is. Can you help me understand that?
Absolutely. So a conservation easement is a voluntary and legally binding agreement between a landowner and a certified conservation easement holder like Palmer Land Conservancy or another land trust. Uh, the conservation easement is, is meant to protect conservation values. Conservation values for the Pueblo Mountain Park, for example, are the natural habitat, the open space and the public access. And the conservation easement sets parameters that ensure that those qualities and those values are maintained in the future. Um, it prohibits certain things that would degrade those conservation values, like the subdivision of the property into sixty ten acre parcels. All with each of their own homes or ensuring that public access is maintained. Um, the conservation easement is legally binding and perpetual. Um, but as landowners, you still own the property. The operations on the property that currently exist and those that are contemplated as we draft the easement are allowed in the future. An easement's not getting away with any of that. It's meant to prevent a substantial change of the property. And so it's legally binding and perpetual on that nature, which is why it's important to ask questions and be really thoughtful and critical of the process. And that's something that Palmer's here for.
Got it. Um, does the process or I guess, is there like a financial aspect of any of this?
Yeah. So conservation easements have financial implications on the front end and the back end. Uh, it costs money to do, to put a conservation easement on a property. That's paying for the time of appraisers or baseline providers or water attorneys and getting a title report and doing all the due diligence. Um, similar to what you would do if you were buying a house. Um, it's similar but different. So there's a price tag that comes along with that. Something that Palmer, you know, we've talked about this and really developed a plan. And what our commitment to the city of Pueblo is that we want to bring this conservation easement property to you all uh, at no cost. We believe that, you know, or we have confidence that we can fundraise the full uh, the full upfront cost of a conservation easement, which can range from seventy five to a hundred and thousand dollars.
Yes. Okay. Um, for the, I guess, for this group that identified conserving the Beulah Mountain Park as, you know, a top priority. Were, did they have suggestions on what specific things to conserve? So I heard some of the examples in terms of like not subdividing the property. What are other examples?
Yeah. So the, the two priorities that rose were one, conservation of the Pueblo Mountain Park and then conservation of private landowners in Beulah. That's a private process that would happen between a landowner and a land trust. The Pueblo Mountain Park, on the other hand, is owned by the city of Pueblo. So if a conservation easement is put on that, it basically says, what do we want this to look like in the future? And would prevent that kind of housing development picture that Dylan was painting so that you could have the, the wildlife habitat, the open space and the public access, things, things like that. So those were sort of the two main buckets that were identified through that program.
And for that bucket around the Pueblo Mountain Park, did they have any um, like visions or like, you know, if I had a magic wand, this is what I would want in that conservation easement?
They didn't get into that in terms of like, like, okay, we're going to draft an easement. Um, but I think that it's a dreamy group in terms of like, what are the things that we could envision this space being? How could we bring people? We had folks talking about how do we bring more, you know, more trails, more access, more places to have um, picnics, more places to eat in town. Cause it was really comprehensive of how do we get people here to enjoy this place for a day, for overnights that they would want to stay or to hear about the place, um, even if they're not from Pueblo or Beulah.
Got it. Okay.
And I would say that, you know, the city of Pueblo is the landowner. When we are negotiating a conservation easement, we're working with the landowner. And so that decision about what should be allowed, what should be prohibited, that would be a decision that the city is making now. It's a flexible process, especially when we're talking about a public property such as this. And so we could open it up and we could solicit community feedback. We've already gotten some from the Rural Technical Assistance Program process. Um, but ultimately it's the city's decision. And I think that the easiest way to summarize what the conservation easement would do is it wouldn't change anything. It would allow for the enhancements, the enhancement of structures and facilities. And things need to be maybe torn down and rebuilt or a bridge needs to be repaired. All of those types of things are fine, but the character of the property, what it is right now is what is meant to be protected. That's the goal of the conservation easement. And so there wouldn't be a significant change to the character of the property. Again, it would prevent things like subdivision and the construction of sixty more houses. Or turning it into a solar or a wind farm or a gravel pit, things that would absolutely tank the conservation value. When you think about the natural habitat and the scenic view shed that it is uh, and the public access that exists.
Mayor, remind me that, so we, the city owns the land. Um, however, we contract out with Nature Wildlife Discovery Center to maintain that land. Is that correct?
Yeah, for the Beulah Mountain Park.
Okay.
Along with the nature center. That's one contract.
Okay.
Question Dylan, real quick, I'm sorry Brett. Um, this thing's worth its weight in gold.
Um, thank you.
The, this is so good. One question, how many farms do we have in Pueblo? Do you know the exact?
Farms, uh, individual farms, there's like over six hundred.
Right?
Over six hundred, there's between one and two hundred farming families.
Okay.
Um, and I mean, so you can just kind of little it down. There's over six hundred fields, there's between one and two hundred farming families. Um, of the major producers, members of the Pueblo Chili Growers Association, that's really six or seven families. Um, so number of ways to describe that.
So folks, this thing is called the Local Food Guide. You should see it sooner and your office is at one twenty one West Center City uh, Suite two thousand in Pueblo?
Yes, sir. The Community Banks of Colorado Building, second floor.
The public be able to come by and grab one of these?
So unfortunately, we don't have a big stack that the public can get. Uh, we kind of go through cycles and waves of. This does exist online, yes, but a physical copy, we go through production waves and we're sort of dwindling down and going to, you know, fundraising for the next printing of the uh, of the food guide. But on our website, palmerland.org, uh, the food guide is available in digital format, as is the field guide for the Pike's Peak region.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Councilor Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, it's no secret that the Bessomer Ditch is definitely leaking a lot of water. If those uh, issues were fixed, how much would it help these farms in this area?
You know, it would, it would be, it would be helpful to all of the shareholders on the Bessomer Ditch for sure. Um, I don't think that it would be a game changing um, uh, action in light of the dry up that is pending, that is set to occur in two thousand and thirty nine. So the, the farmers would greatly benefit from removing the leaks from the Bessomer Ditch. Transit loss is a major thing, evap or evaporation loss is a major thing. Um, but when we think about the scope and scale, uh, the return on investment from effort, uh, addressing the dry up of five thousand of the fifteen hundred acres on the Bessomer Ditch is the key action that we're looking to do. Um, in order to protect a critical mass of irrigated farmland.
Okay, uh, Councilor Floris.
Thank you for that uh, report. Uh, you had mentioned earlier that uh, the Pueblo Board of Water Works have purchased, I think, five thousand shares of
Roughly, yeah.
Of um, uh, Bessomer Ditch Irrigation Ditch Company shares. Uh, and that that was, that was the area in which uh, we could find ourselves with drying up. I don't know how many acres of land at that point. So what, where's that water going? I mean, if the Pueblo Board of Water Works owns those shares now, why can't they continue irrigating uh, those, those areas instead of letting them dry up? Maybe I didn't understand.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's a, it's a complex and confusing process. I'm still not sure that my mom knows what I do for a living. So uh, you, you actually said it correctly. So Pueblo Board of Water Works purchased roughly a third of the ditch, five thousand shares, five thousand acres of water. Um, in two thousand and nine, they leased that water back to all of those shareholders. So those, nothing has changed on the ditch as of today. There's been no dry up, uh, because Pueblo Water didn't need all of the water that it purchased. And when you look at what's happening with one of its biggest customers, the Comanche Power Plans, uh, that's a big water demand that in there. You know, Pueblo Water does a good job of long-term forecasting for their demand. Uh, and so they purchased the water before the announcement that Comanche was coming down. So, you know, Pueblo Water said, oh, we don't need all this water right now. Why dry up when the community can continue to benefit from that leased water? But the leases only go through two thousand and thirty nine. They could be extended again in the future for sure. Um, but any, I mean, we live in the arid west. Any utility that purchases water is going to need it eventually. And so we're working before that dry up occurs to optimize where the remaining water is going to be used. So that it's used on the most economically productive farms, so that the families that want to continue to farm on the Bessomer Ditch have the best opportunity to farm on the Bessomer Ditch.
Wouldn't it benefit um, our, our, our conservation easements along the um, to the east here? If we purchased all of these shares so that uh, the water cannot be moved elsewhere. It, it just seems like we should keep all the shares locally and utilize the water beyond two thousand and thirty, thirty nine.
Are you talking about the shares, the one third that Pueblo Water purchased or the two thirds?
We want now, the Pueblo Board of Water Works owns a third.
Yeah.
But the two thirds.
I love it. Let's, let's do that.
That's, that's, I don't think it's a solution.
Yeah, no, you know, the goal is to protect a critical mass of irrigated farmland. The goal uh, in agricultural communities is to keep water, the fabric, fabric that really holds these communities together, that makes the Pueblo Chili possible. Uh, is to keep the water there.
And you're familiar with the lower art uh, conserva- Conservancy District.
Absolutely, yeah, we're for. We're partners.
Their sole mission is to just to not allow anyone to move the water out of the Arkansas Valley. And it's really worked, uh, although prior to them, and being a Conservancy District, a lot of water had already moved up to Aurora. And you, you find a lot of dry land in Crowley County as a result of that.
Crowley County is unfortunately the, the best example of we, that we have of the worst case scenario.
We need to work on not letting that happen in Pueblo County.
Exactly. And the lower Arkansas Valley Water Conservancy District is a fantastic partner. We're, we're both working together in the same direction. We bring different skills and tools to the table, uh, which I think is good for the agricultural communities in the future of the Pueblo Chili and the Rocky Ford Melon and all the produce that we have right here in our backyard.
Thank you. Okay, any other councils, any other comments? I think we're good, Dylan. Thank you. Jolene, thank you. Do you have any other things you want to add?
Uh, I, I would just say that the, the door, the door is wide open. We're going to continue to pull together information uh, about the Pueblo Mountain Park and a potential conservation easement. And if it's all right with you all, council members, we'd like, uh, we would like to reach out to you all individually to set up meetings. Um, just to start to inform you on the more, you know, nitty gritty details of what, what all of this means.
Okay. I think we're good, guys. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing before we move on to the next, the city ballot initiatives. Yak, I just want to let you know that Councilor Floris has nominated himself to go up on the plane. I want to make sure we get that done. Uh, let us, let's work on a date. Mr. Watson, you, you ready? I got it. I had a feeling you would. Oh, did you? Well, so trying to get that through, but now we're going to go into ballot initiatives. Um, and then we'll go into the concepts, the attorney throwing in a presentation. And then we'll move to executive session right after that. So we're somewhat on time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, before you tonight and through our PowerPoint presentation, you will be seeing the city's proposed uh, ballot measures. So we have two ballot measures that we're going to be proposing. The first one is a sales tax increase of a total of one percent. Um, currently, the city of Pueblo's sales tax rate is three point seven percent. Point five going to half cent sales tax, point two going to public safety sales tax and three percent going into the general fund. Um, set by appropriations by city council for the payment of the general operating and administrative costs of the city. Uh, the city's sales tax has not been raised in over fifty years, although we've seen costs of uh, inflation and costs of goods continue to go up. So when we have, when we looked at different sales tax rates through different communities, um, different taxes that we could bring to city council. The grocery tax was definitely spoken about a lot, taxing non-exempt items at a three point five percent, generating about twelve million dollars a year in additional funds to the city, but that did not seem very favorable um, to the city, citizens of the community. And so tonight we're bringing forward a one percent sales tax over increase overall. So what does that mean? One percent overall. So that means instead of three pennies out of every dollar being spent um, by the community into the center, city's general fund, the city would collect four pennies for every dollar spent in the community. This is the example of what the ballot language um, would say. The estimated, estimated um, number that you see up there, the twenty six million dollars is based off of two thousand and twenty four's numbers. So as you can see, the projections um, at the three point seven percent, what was collected in two thousand and twenty four and what the collections would be at the four point seven, it would give an increased cost of about twenty six million um, dollars to the city's general fund. And so this proposal, if passed by city council, would be on the November fourth ballot. We would start collecting tax January first. Uh, the city's budget will already be working its way through city council at that time. And so my proposal would be for the year of two thousand and twenty six, all one percent totaling twenty six million dollars of be allocated just for revenue for roads. Um, and well, uh, listed up here is going to be a slate of the roads that would be paved. These are in the track to be paved from two thousand and twenty six to two thousand and twenty nine over the next several years. Um, whether they're asphalt or they're concrete. And this was put together by the Public Works Department. City council has seen this list um, before, but as you can see, this would go all the way. This is four years worth of work that we would be able to do in one year's funds. Moving on past uh, the two thousand and twenty six budget, the money would be used to continue to maintain the city quality of life services and infrastructure. Um, be able to maintain our pools program, streetscapes, public safety, continue paving roads past the twenty five million dollars, maintaining aging infrastructure and considering new and improved amenities for the community. This is going to be a draft of the B one, um, as it sits today with the two thousand and twenty five budget. As you can see, we have a deficit of eight point seven million dollars highlighted in the fund balance with a fund future appropriations at um, eighteen million dollars. So we know that already for a two thousand and twenty six budget, depending on how general services uh, contract comes back. We are sitting at a two point seven million dollar increase to the ballot, to the budget. Um, going on a decrease in the fund balance of already eight point seven, it's a little bit of a twelve million dollar deficit that we can already project for the two thousand and twenty six budget. And we have eighteen million dollars left in the reserves. Any questions on this so far? Second ballot uh, language that I'm going to be proposing is the change of the half cent sales tax ballot. Um, this is going to mirror the criteria ordinance that we brought to city council that was voted down. Um, so these are the, the whereas's that are going to be listed um, in the ordinance that will support the ballot for the half cent sales tax change. Here is the ballot language that the city will be proposing, um, which includes um, the language of economic catalysts, projects, preventing economic leakage and promoting placemaking by adopting the ordinance one one zero zero one. Stop me if I'm careful. These are the uh, three additional sets of language that we tried to add via the criteria ordinance that was voted down. Uh, the economic catalyst project, meaning the project has to have a substantial impact on the economic well being of the city, city or the region by substantially stimulating economic growth and development, creating new jobs, increasing consumer spending um, and tax base. Economic leakage means the reduction of economic activity within the city caused by the outflow of resources, such as money and tax revenue from local economy, hindering growth and expansion of the community and placemaking, which means the process of an act creating high quality public. and place making, which means the process of an app creating high-quality public spaces and amenities that encourage people to want to live, play, and work within the city of Pueblo. So the uh, criteria ordinance that we brought to the city council, we heard from the city council, we heard from Pedco, our economic development partners, that they felt that the criteria ordinance was being changed a little bit too much and we wanted to see it go to the vote of the people. Um, so here it is. Going to be going to a vote of the people to change how the half cent sales tax can be spent. So uh, you considered the ordinance on June twenty-third, just to amend, amend the criteria ordinance, standard rules and regulations for appropriation uh, and the expenditure of monies. Um, and it was voted down. So we feel like uh, it should be placed on the November fourth municipal election now and leave it up to a vote of the people to decide how this money is going to be spent moving forward.
So just a couple of things that I would point out in the uh, the criteria, adding the additional language, the economic catalyst, and economic leakage and the place making. These are all economic development concepts that are not novel or new. A lot of other cities across Colorado and across the nation use these um, these tools in their economic development um, process. In fact, um, Petco's consultant acknowledged that these were concepts that were, were used throughout the state and throughout the country. Um, but they hadn't been asked to use that model for Pueblo. So consistently for Pueblo, Pueblo has been um, focused primarily on primary jobs. This will not necessarily change that focus. What it's going to do is just add economic catalyst as part of the definition of primary jobs. So primary jobs is still going to be a focus, but this will broaden it and allow the, the city more flexibility going forward. Um, and in essence, it's just diversifying our portfolio, if you like, of things that can make up our economic um, development. Um, so that's one thing that I'd like to point out. Um, and, and these are uh, examples of what um, primary jobs, economic catalyst project might look like for a primary job. Um, so it's going to allow the city to look at any project that would allow them to bring in outside dollars. So outside dollars is not just primary jobs, but anytime someone is going to come into the city and spend money that they made outside of the city. Um, so you have um, commuter communities where people live and work in that community or live in a certain community, work somewhere else, but they spend their money in the community where they live. Um, so that might be one way that we would attract people in is by making more place making. Um, bringing people here because they want to live here, because they like the amenities, because they like the cost of living. Um, but they may work in Colorado Springs or they may work in Monument or in Denver. Um, but they're going to be living here, so they'll be spending their tax or their money here and building our tax base. So that might, that's an example of bringing in outside money um, that one of these might support. Um, economic leakage is another. We have a lot of people in the community that look for specialized stores such as Costco or Shields or Bass Pro Shop. They now travel to other um, communities to purchase items and spend their money there. Um, if we could use some of the economic development money to perhaps attract some of those um, specialty type uh, stores or businesses here, then people would be spending their money here rather than driving to other communities to do that. Um, again, primary jobs, uh, economic catalyst project is just a change to the definition of primary jobs, similar to what we did with tourism, uh, with the regional tourism. Um, just a couple of the projects that we've, we've thrown around is Jellystone is one project that I know councils talked about um, bringing into Pueblo. That would be um, a project that we could incentivize uh, through economic development funds with a change with this criteria ordinance. Um, because the criteria ordinance as it's currently written does not allow us to incentivize just general tourism. It has to be a project that's tied to regional, the Regional Tourism Act. Um, but this would allow us to incentivize a project like Jellystone that again is going to bring in those outside dollars to the community. Um, so people um, that, more businesses that we develop, uh, for instance, that are going to help support uh, Lake Pueblo um, here in Pueblo, in, in the, the city could also um, be incentivized because they're bringing in outside dollars to the community. Um, but these might be another example, um, if we were able to attract a business like that. Um, but there's, there's not just retail, there's also um, attracting home offices, building more businesses, bringing in different types of businesses. Um, the city has traditionally gone after heavy industrial um, for economic development, and that doesn't always necessarily have to be the case. Um, so this allows us just more tools in the toolbox.
That concludes our report. How can I answer any questions?
Council Flores. Just so I'm clear, because I, I'm, I, I want to make sure that I understand what you're asking of us. You're going back uh, basically to the same ordinance that we voted for three against. And now you're saying that you're going to let the voters uh, identify what we did not want. Um, and so now we're back to the original model that you guys presented at Petco and presented to us, which lost here four to three. That's what you're doing, right?
Yes, because that was the ask of what the Petco board came in um, presented to the city council was that we take this to a vote of the people because we were going to be changing the criteria ordinance so much. Councilor Mastry also uh, made comments that if we were going to be changing the half cent sales tax ordinance, it should be changed by a vote of the people.
Because there's also a compromise here and that, that's where I thought we were headed. And the compromise is that uh, I think Petco was in a position uh, you know, to, to look at some of the changes that you had made. And, and maybe, I'm not, it's probably not the right term, but meet you halfway so that the, so that the uh, the ballot issue really had a chance of passing. Uh, I think this is leading us um, to an election uh, that the voters may turn down because it doesn't look like uh, the administration is on the same page as Petco and you're certainly not on the same page as city council. So it seems to me that we should be looking uh, at a ballot measure that really takes everything into consideration, uh, with the key word being compromise. Taking some of the ideas that you have, some of the ideas that Petco had, some of the ideas that city council has, and come up with a ballot issue, okay, that, that meets us all halfway. Uh, because I think Petco was in a position to make some modifications and some changes. Uh, I think that was clear. And uh, I thought, I thought they were going to present something at a work session with that alternative. But uh, so what you're asking us to do uh, in a simple form is that since you voted for three for what you're presenting right now, you're now asking us to do it to go to the voters on something that we rejected. And uh, the question now is, what is the likelihood, especially with a one percent increase in an overall tax, that both of these things would even pass in November? So I, I, I think this needs a little bit of work, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, because I, you know, and there's, this whole area of bringing a Costco in, a Shields, a, a Super, all of that. I don't think the public understands it. Petco or half cent sales tax has nothing to do with the Costco coming into Pueblo. Costco does their analysis on pro capita income, you know, traffic patterns, uh, competition. They certainly would go into competition, the Saints Club, there's no question about that. And that's the reason why I would be against this economic leakage and thinking that we could get a Costco, that ain't going to happen. And, and we've, uh, Petco has talked to Costco and, and they have a whole different method of analyzing uh, you know, how they bring in a Costco to any community. Number one, they look at population or per capita, they look at traffic patterns, they look at uh, competition. And uh, I don't know where, you know, uh, but we can dream about a lot of stuff, but that is not going to happen. Uh, and then tourism, I think is something that, that should be on there. I think there was really much objection at, at, with, with Petco and their analysis of this, that, that a Jellystone would be a good, you know, compromise. Uh, Buckniss has already said that they, they'd never come in this area. They're looking also for their business plan and how they do things. And uh, they're going, they're going to be up where the major population is. I mean, there's no question about that. But anyway, uh, that's just my explanation at this point. And uh, I don't know if there was a question in there. I guess the question is whether the two of you would be willing to get together and, and put together a compromise. Uh, and I, I just think that this has to be weighed really on the ability of, of this ballot issue passing. And I think the way this is presented, uh, I think it's less likely, likely that it won't pass.
President. Were you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Okay. Pretty quick.
I thought that I guess what, what concerns me about the conversation is why would the, the citizens the community compromise with Petco? I mean, Petco is an employee that was hired to administer and to, to create jobs and so on and so forth. I mean, it, it just seems to me that no group, it was anger in the group, but with the city could come in and demand or ask or say that uh, that we need to do anything. And I heard the same thing that, that, that you said just a little bit ago is that no, I heard it two or three times from council that this is something that the voters should have a say-so on. This, let them make, let them make the decision. They make the decision on the half cent tax, it is the community's money. It's not uh, Petco's money, it's not, um, it's the community's money and they should have the say-so. Uh, but I've heard the same thing also that Council Flores has asserted that, that Petco as an organization wants to sit down and, and negotiate or, or do whatever. And uh, I mean, we've gone the last seven months with talking about this. It's, it just seems kind of strange that now all of a sudden that there's a negotiation going on that I haven't heard. Have you heard anything?
I have not.
Okay.
I know they have a special meeting called for Wednesday, I'm sure, because they know that this proposal.
Will these be on the agenda?
Twenty-eighth for first reading. Along. Yep.
Before it's not reading?
Yeah.
So if some miraculous uh, agreement was reached in city council, I, how could city council ever get it done before it has to be on the ballot?
I don't necessarily think that you could. That's why we brought the change in the criteria ordinance forward the first time. Um, that was a process that we brought to you after we had met with the Petco board, members who aren't on the Petco board after several months. And that's what we were able to come um, together to bring the city council in. We heard from Petco, we heard from city council members that if it was going to be this significant of a change, that it should go to a vote of the people. And we agree.
Okay. Council Flores.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I kind of agree with a lot of President Aleth's points. Um, I think this was talked about for a long time. I know I brought this up as being potentially something that I wanted to do uh, during our retreat. Um, we, there was a lot of talk about it amongst council um, about us potentially doing it as a council and now that is going to a vote. Um, I think there was, you know, ample opportunity uh, for Petco and the board and other people to come in. And we did have a couple of members come in and testify during the vote that we had. Um, but, you know, I, I don't, like you said, I don't see there being any time um, for us to amend this and get it on the ballot. Um, I think that it is important that it became a vote of the people. I even think that if we amended it as a council, that it still eventually should have been put forward in front of the people to see if they wanted to keep it this way or revert it back um, after we had a trial period. Um, but I think letting them uh, voice their concerns or their opinions on this matter is very important. Um, one of the number one things that I get asked about, um, besides the roads and a couple of other things is Petco. Uh, anytime I'm out uh, talking to citizens, um, I've had a large number of people um, say that they want nothing to do with Petco anymore, they want to abolish Petco and things like that. Um, you know, so I'm hopeful that maybe seeing that we're working on some changes for it would kind of maybe change some people's opinions on that, change their minds, um, help them be optimistic because it is their money. And uh, a lot of people currently aren't satisfied with how it's being spent currently anymore. Um, so I'm hopeful for this, but I do have a question. Um, if this gets voted down by the citizens, what happens? Does it stay in its current form or is that the end of it?
It stays in its current form for one more year and it can be ran again at the end of next year.
And then if, so then next year will be the one, whether they vote to continue it or not, not this one?
This one includes a continuation as well. So this ballot question is to, not only to continue the tax for another five years, but to modify the, the criteria.
And when that five years start, this upcoming January or the next?
It would start in Janu- January first of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Tino.
I, I want to say that I agree with Councilman Flores and with Councilwoman Aleth. And uh, I met with an individual today who was a businessman from out of state, wants to bring fifty jobs to this community. And it will grow. But he's being supported and, and is looking to Petco for his uh, assistance in moving this forward. And subsequently, I agreed with Mr. Flores and Mr. Aleth. Thank you.
If.
Council uh, Flores and then Council, my Councilwoman Martinez. I'll defer to Councilwoman Martinez.
I have a lot of questions, just to pivot to the one percent sales tax increase proposal. Um, my first question, I guess, is our current service tax is three percent.
Three-seven.
Three-seven. So this would increase it to four-seven for sales use tax. What are, um, because I know when we were originally talking about tax proposals, Mayor, you um, put um, basically like comparable cities to Pueblo and like what their tax rates, but I think that it was specific to grocery taxes. Do you know what the, what a four-seven um, tax rate is compared to other municipalities in Colorado?
I don't know. Val can probably come and answer. Come, come up here, Val. I'm pulling up her presentation.
Sorry, Val.
So in the presentation I gave, I gave you examples of other sales tax rates compared to ours. We're low. If we went up the one percent, we would be in the mix of everybody else. So I mean, we can get that to you again, but there is a chart in there that says what their tax rate is and what ours would look like in the mix of those if we go up one percent.
Yeah, could we see that again, Val? I'm just, I, I know that I remember seeing it for that other revenue generation, but I guess I can't remember for sales tax.
Yeah, there were two different charts. One was for the grocery because of course we've got cities that have a base sales tax rate and then they have another grocery.
On top of.
Right. And it could be the same as their base and it may not be the same. So the two different charts would show you the base sales tax rate and then the grocery tax if they had it, any of the other rates they may have.
Um, but as the tax expert for the city, we would be comparable to the other, like uh, we would fall in line, I said, I guess, with the other cities that have similar populations and.
Yeah, along the front range we would, yeah.
Okay.
The, the tax rate is, is uh, yeah, it would be in the medium in the mix of all that.
The one percent tax increase, what would that mean for the consumer?
Well, it'd be.
One penny on every dollar.
One penny on every dollar?
Every dollar.
An increase of one.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, and then Mayor, for the first year, I understand that you want to allocate it all to capital. That's why I'm, why I do that.
Because you're already going to be seeing the budget. The budget will already come through city council before that time. Um, and I think that if we are going to ask the taxpayers to increase spending, I would like to see a large portion of it. Um, not necessarily allocated to wages, but a- allocated to public improvements within the community. And I think that roads is on the top of everybody's mind. Uh, twenty-six million dollars would put a large dent uh, in what we have to do over the next several years. If we don't allocate a large lump sum or uh, like the twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars, the city of Pueblo receives about two point five million dollars from our highway user tax that we use to pave roads, currently slated for twenty twenty-six. That's what we have to pave roads. So we are going to fall way behind. That's what we have to pave roads. So we are going to fall way behind compared to what we have been doing. Uh, the previous administration debruised. And when they debruised, um, city council approved it. They allocated ten million dollars over the last three years to pave roads. That funding is gone now. Um, and so we need to figure out another funding source. So I thought that that would be a good way to put forward, asking the taxpayers to pay more money. Um, you would see a large amount of roads being resurfaced, um, concrete being replaced, new asphalt being laid within the community.
Okay. And that's just the plan for this next fiscal year. And then after that, it would go into.
It would go into the city's general fund.
Okay.
I would hope that we would use it for capital improvement projects. Like I keep stating, um, the city has gone from twenty million to twelve million to only three million allocated last year to capital infrastructure. It's probably going to be less than that this year. We just don't have the funding to allocate um, to capital. The only funding that we are using for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six budget is the interest that we are gaining off the half cent sales tax that can only be used for capital improvement projects.
So how much projected right now? I know that the budget is still getting finalized. For twenty twenty six, how much right now do you have budgeted for capital?
Three million.
Okay. Um, okay, then we're going to go back to the half cent sales tax one. So Carla, you said that this, so this ballot language is not only the continuation of the half cent sales tax, but also an expansion of uh, what it could be used for. Correct. Help me understand, because I thought that ballot languages had to be single subject. Why, why combine both of them?
Because it all deals with the same tax. So it's an extension of the tax. It's all extending the tax.
Okay. I would, I I guess my only hesitation is that it could be confusing. But if you you know what I mean? Because it's, I mean, it's it's a complicated, uh, the way that it reads is pretty complicated.
It is.
So I I guess that would be my only hesitation, that it's it it could be complicated for people to understand, right? Like, it's not, you're not paying any new money. Uh, it's a continuation of a a tax that you're already paying, although we're just changing the purposes for which it could be.
And that's the first line line in the ballot language. It just says without raising additional taxes, shall the existing one half cent percent sales tax and use tax rate for the economic development be extended for a five year period from its current expiration of December thirty first, twenty twenty six through December thirty first, twenty thirty one, and the criteria standard rules and regulations for the appropriation and expenditures of funds in the sales and use tax capital improvement project fund be amended to include economic catalyst project preventative economic leakage and promote placemaking by adopting ordinance one one zero zero one. So it's the same ballot language that's been passed every year, but adding in those three additional uses.
Cool.
Flores.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to make a comment, um, to some of the comments that are made here. And that's that the reason that we listen to Petco is that Petco has been successful for forty two years. And Petco is made up of professional business people that came up with this idea. And they've been successful, uh, over, um, I guess it would be now eight elections because they've been very precise about how economic money should be used in a community. And I know that there's a desire to, uh, to look at, uh, not only primary jobs, which has really been a successful by all measures. We have been successful in focusing on primary jobs. And I I've said it before, uh, there are communities, Rust Belt cities like Pueblo that depended so much on steel. Uh, there's so many examples in the Midwest of Gary, Indiana, Springfield, Ohio, Youngstown. Many of these cities have lost half of their population. We should be listening to professional business people in this community and why the model has been successful, why this model has has been renewed by the citizens every five years for the eight, the last eight cycles. Uh, and and we should. And the reason that we don't, I mean, there there's some flexibility and I don't speak for the whole board. I'm just one board member, but it it is, you're not going to have the same economic impact when you, when you bring in a primary job or you bring in a Costco, uh, that's going to be competing with, uh, uh, with Sam's Club. You go to it's, there's a, there's a lot less three to one kind of impact for retail. And that's why retail has never real ever been a significant portion of of the Petco model. And I I'm just very concerned that with asking the citizens to, uh, renew the half cent sales tax along with another one percent. Uh, I think this has all the characteristics of of a ballot that that both could fail in November. And I I still think that there's, uh, uh, the basis for a compromise that we could include, uh, assisting retail in the infrastructure area, just like what's happening on Pueblo Boulevard right now, where we could use, I I think there is that option. I I think that we could include something like that. But the 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 entire basis of of primary jobs is the catalyst. And I I just think, uh, that's my opinion, but, uh, I'll be I'll be at the meeting on Wednesday and, uh, I'd like the opportunity of bringing back or meeting with the mayor and with you, Carla, to see if there's some because what we have here now is we have an internal battle now, which is just, I guarantee that's that it's going to fail. When in fact, we should all be rowing the boat in the same direction, all of us. Uh, and I I think that opportunity still exists.
Well, one thing, if I can respond, is this doesn't change the focus of primary jobs. Changes the definition of primary jobs, but it doesn't change the focus. Primary jobs is still a focus. Bringing in outside money is still a focus. None of that is going to change. And we have a partnership with with Petco. It is a non-exclusive partnership with Petco. And we have relied almost exclusively on Petco in the past, but that does not mean that the city doesn't have a say in its own economic development and how it can go forward. And you can still work in a partnership. Petco can still do what Petco does best. And that is focus on the heavy industrial, bringing in jobs, primary jobs, but it, um, what I think the mayor is asking in taking to the citizens is whether or not that should be expanded to allow the city to look at other avenues as well. Um, and part of this is population growth. And I think I've heard council say on numerous times that our population has remained static over time. We haven't grown a lot. Um, and a lot of those big box stores like you're talking about do look at population. One of the reasons we're not attractive to them is because we don't have the population. Some of these things that we're talking about changing could change that factor because you could be, um, attracting other people to come and live here and increase that population number. So there's a lot of different factors in economic development. Um, and and I think this allows us to expand that. And I understanding what you're saying with the 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 voters, and I do believe it, it can be a complicated issue. And a complicated question, but it is extending the half cent sales tax and expanding that that criteria to allow for more. And, um, the reason that this money is not being used on Pueblo Boulevard for that infrastructure now is because it is not allowed under the criteria ordinance at is as it is currently written. And and so we can't use it for that. And there's a lot of things that are, um, that are out there that we can't use it for because of the way the criteria ordinance is currently written. Now with this, if we had changed the definitions, then it could be used for that. And it would be used for infrastructure. Ultimately, city council has a final say in how this money is spent. Doesn't matter if the project's brought from Petco, if it's brought by city staff. Ultimately, city council is a final determiny determinators of whether this money is going to be spent and how it's going to be spent. So if something comes across city council where you're not comfortable with that project, regardless of whether or not it fits a criteria, you still don't have to vote for it. So if it was for a retail store and you don't like the idea that it's supporting a restore for something more than infrastructure, you don't have to vote for it. City council doesn't have to pass it and allow the money to be spent that way. So you guys are the final determination for that. And it won't change. That won't change whether this gets voted in or not. Um, because ultimately, uh, that that authority has been given to city council.
Okay. Um, Council Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, go back to the half, uh, one percent sales tax increase, then back to the half cent. Um, I think it's really good to allocate the money specifically for a use that is the number one concern of citizens being the roads. I know that's the number one concern. Um, maybe besides public safety that everybody talks about. Um, there's a lot of free money that was used for a lot of those infrastructure things and maybe more of it that could have been used for those things. And like you said, we're kind of dug ourselves into a hole. So, um, I think, um, you know, it's important to remember too, that just because we support something like this to be voted on by the citizens doesn't mean that we're trying to necessarily raise your taxes. We're trying to ask the community, hey, if you do get a tax raise, are you okay with it going for these uses? Um, so you said this would raise approximately, I think, what, twenty seven million in a year?
So based off of the twenty twenty four numbers, taking out that anomaly payment that we received from Everas of four million dollars, it would, it would have roughly raised about twenty four million dollars in twenty twenty four. Um, sales taxes up and down for this year, so I don't have a better number to to share with you yet this far. Um, but based off of twenty twenty fourth numbers, that will, that's what would be listed in the ballot language.
And how much did the street repair utility raise in a given year?
Two point five nine.
Two point five?
And that was three dollars a month for households, um, and a larger amount for businesses.
So and is there a stipulation or is it just like, kind of like your word saying that this will be allocated to those uses only?
If it passed on November fourth, you would see, um, a capital improvement project come before city council with the dollar amount that's projected for the twenty twenty six budget and all of that money would be re, uh, moved to our revenue for roads account.
Okay. And then, um, back to the half cent, uh, sales tax, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's, um, an internal conflict or an internal battle. I just think it's, you know, us trying to give the citizens a voice and how to be more creative with the Petco dollars. I don't think any of us are trying to row boat in any different directions. I just think we're trying to come up with new ideas to help improve our community. And, um, you know, like I said, I think it's important that, um, we all kind of do get on the same page and we don't try to fight amongst each other. We just do what's in the best interest of the community and make sure we don't, um, you know, try to take any sides in this. And we just kind of, you know, let the people speak their opinions on a matter and make sure that we give out proper information on this and what will be affected.
Councilwoman Mastry.
Um, let's go, I'll start first off with the one percent sales tax. So when you say twenty six million will be, um, dedicated towards roads, where's your deficit? Where's your deficit coming from?
Reserve.
From the reserve, but we only have fourteen million reserves and we're not continuously building the reserves if we're allocating anything that comes in extra on the one percent to the, um, to the roads.
I'm sorry, Council, can you say that again?
So how are you building your reserves? If you're taking the one percent, are you hoping that there's going to be a generation of more, um?
What?
One percent is going to generate about twenty five more million dollars for twenty twenty six's budget.
Correct, but you're allocating that.
To roads. So in twenty twenty seven, you'll have twenty five plus million. Um, whatever's not spent could go into roads or could be spent on infrastructure costs.
Where's, but what's up? Your your deficit's running out. Your deficit is, you have eighteen million, right?
In reserves.
In reserves.
Huh.
So your deficit's cutting eight million out of it this in twenty twenty six.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Mm hmm.
So that leaves you with six million. So what do you do the the following year? We're going to take that six million.
We we project the budget. We do it by year. Um, so our projections will include the additional revenue from the one percent for the twenty twenty seven budget.
And then, so you don't, you don't really have twelve, you'll have, you won't have twenty six million in the second year. Because it.
It depends what happens with sales tax. It depends what costs, what happens with costs and wages with employees. It depends what happens with operating. I've asked everybody to cut fifteen percent of their operating budget, which is going to cut about three million dollars out of this year's deficit already. Um, it, I I can't see into a crystal ball, so I can't tell you what sales tax is going to be in twenty twenty six. I can just tell you what happened in twenty twenty four.
So tell us that what the increase in salaries are going to be for twenty twenty six, for twenty twenty seven's budget. And you can tell us whatever is bought along the way.
I don't know what the salary increases are going to be in twenty twenty seven. You know what they're going to be in twenty twenty six, but we don't know twenty twenty sevens until we go to the negotiating table.
Well, yeah, let's just take an average, right? Sure, because we've had the average, uh, percentage per year. So you can make a projection based off of the last contract. Um, the other thing too is the things you buy along the way, like this year we had eight and a half, uh, eight and a half million deficit. But yet we have already, we've taken on a building payment for the, um, PBR. We're going to be taking on a payment for the air conditioning. We're going to be um, taking on a payment for the shelter because we said we would not be getting probably any funding for the shelter um, until, um, twenty twenty seven. And then we talked about, uh, and then we have salary increases, potential salary increases. So right now you're at twelve million. Are you at twelve million with all of those things involved?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at an average of still operating, say the sales tax stays the same. The only thing we're gaining is the one percent in additional funds that we're asking for. We're just going to continue this into this twelve million cycle. The other thing too is what's, um, kind of, uh, strange to me is in the past that we've talked, it's been a struggle for Public Works to get ten million dollars of roads done in a year. Now we're trying to double that and get twenty six million dollars.
It wouldn't be done within the year. It would just be an allocation of that one percent years funds of twenty six million dollars to do four years worth of work.
To do four years of worth of work? So twenty six million to do four years worth of work?
Yep, twenty six to twenty nine.
So then those are all the roads that were. So that would be just in in reality, then it would be six, six million.
It depends on how quickly they can get them done. We contract a lot of that out. It's not just public work.
So it's not twenty, so it's not, um, twenty six million for a year. It's about six million that you're you're allocating.
Right now, we pay ten million dollars a year in roads. Um, I think that we are capable of paving more depending on paving season and to paving, how many contractors we can get out. We know what roads need to be paved.
We've had, uh, we've had a business, we've already been doing this for the past four years and there has been a struggle because lack of paving contractors. Lack, you know, we only have one material, material supplier. Um, and so that's, that's been talked about several times, how that magically changes in the the next year is beyond me. But the other thing too is, so the twenty six million seems like a, uh, you know, a, a, uh, large amount. But now we're saying twenty six million for the next four years actually is really what you're saying.
I'm saying that you can pave four years worth of roads that need to be paved, that are slated to be paved in the next four years with funding from one year of one percent.
Mm hmm. That's six and a half, what, six and a half million a year, basically.
Of money that we don't have an allocation for. As I said, we only are going to generate about two point five million dollars a year to pave roads from now until eternity, until something changes.
Mm hmm.
That's money that we get from the highway user tax.
And then, um, you know, because I trust the taxpayers. They just need to have the proper information.
Sure.
To make their decisions.
Just a proposal for what the one percent could be slated for. Council could turn around and say, put the one percent in general funds and do different kinds of capital improvements for twenty twenty six. This is just my proposal based off the concerns that I hear from the community.
But you're taking, what you're taking is a very sensitive subject in this community, and that is roads.
Yeah, that's why I'm proposing it.
Which I remember in a debate, you said people were over roads when we were running from air.
Sure.
You know, but now we're using roads as the primary hook.
It's something that I have slated that's prepared, that's been prepared by Public Works for many years. Council has seen the presentation.
Yeah, I've seen, we've seen that.
So it's something that, as the mayor, I feel like we should allocate the funding towards because we know what those projects are going to cost already and we know what projects need to be done. Instead of putting up what twenty six million dollars.
They came out with the, uh, proposal, the study back in twenty twenty two, when you and I first got on council. And so, um, I do trust the taxpayers to make the right decisions. Um, the other thing too is the debruising. Is it, is it sunset? Does that sunset? Um, the other thing too is the debreasing, is it, is it sunset? Does that sunset at any time or is that completely?
We're, we're debroused, so, but we.
We're completely debroused, there's no sunset on that or anything.
Yeah, so the, the tax, I, I included the language in the ballot language, probably didn't need to include it because it's already been debroused and the only thing we're doing is extending the tax, but it was familiar language and everybody is familiar with it, so I left it in there.
Okay, so let me move on to the, um, half cent sales tax. You know, um.
Uh, let me put a caveat, with the new tax, we have to debruce. But with the half cent sales tax, the extension, it's, it's been debroused. But with the one percent increase, you have to debruce it, and that language is in the ballot language.
So you're re- debreasing it again?
We're debreasing the increase.
The increase?
Yes.
Hmm. That's interesting, okay, because the, the taxpayers, we haven't worked under that, um, added revenue to, for the city and that one percent to be debrused, but you're, you're adding it to the ballot language, so it specifically talks about the one percent because the seven, what is it, seven and a?
Three, seven, three, seven.
The three, seven, I'm looking at it, I'm sorry, I was looking at it totally, the three, seven has already been debrused. So you have to bring this forward on this ballot to add the debruce, debreasing to the one percent.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move over to the half cent sales tax.
And I, uh, I found Val's presentation, so those, the table with the sales tax statewide is, is up on the screen.
Mm-hmm. You know, they have just economic, different economic drivers in all of those communities that do have the higher sales tax. Don't know if that higher sales tax has gotten where they're at today, but they have, you know, they have twice as many amenities and, um, retail that we have. I mean, there's, there's, they're, they're bigger in population. You know, um, we are the, the, probably the poorest community in, of all the large cities. And so, you know, those are things also to consider for our community. Um, the other thing too is, oh, so let's go back to, let's go to the half cent sales tax and I would like to ask some questions there. Um, you know, I've been in- involved in two development, uh, projects in my career. And we, we have, um, I don't, I don't like the buzzwords. I didn't like the buzzwords when you came, when you guys proposed it last time, you know, like, uh, at that time it was Costco and Super Target and some other one, Buck, I think Buc-E's. So when it comes to economic leakage, um, uh, the development projects that I have been involved in, and one that I've most recently seen, have, um, letters of intent from the retailers. We don't have any letters of intent, we're just throwing names out there. That's very complex for the community because, you know, when you look at the response from the community, they're going, we're not getting a, a Costco now. We're not getting a Super Target now because council doesn't care about us and I need Super Target. There was never a letter of intent for that, so these are buzzwords. Uh, we need to sell, if we're going to sell it, we need to sell an honest proposal to the community through the vote. They need to know what they're voting for. And the co- the, the average everyday person, just, they see Costco Shields, Bass Pro, and they go, wow, that's what we're getting, because that was evident on the social, the whole social media of us, council, turning it down the first time. Um, and we go over to primary jobs. You know, we talk about the best that, um, PEDCO did in the last five years was forty two jobs in five years at forty, forty thousand dollars, um, uh, a, um,
So.
Salary, but these aren't much better, the salaries. But the, the, these are, these, when we get down to, um, some of these positions, they're not, the salaries aren't much better, so we're really not much better than PEDCO on that one. We're trying to change the description of primary jobs. Um, I really think that, um, and then we talk about placemaking and aquatic center, and I know that's some dream of some counselors here on this dais, but we're talking about fifty five million dollars to, that was two years ago to build, but who knows what it's gone up to now. Because, you know, as we continue to do capital improvements here, they're very extensive in that. And I think, um, and it's not what I think, it's really what, when I hear from the community, what they're looking for is they're looking for the leadership in this community to bring them the best deal ever. And when you talk about, um, PURA and you talk about PEDCO, who are economic partners and driving at the economy here, we're saying, oh, we're going to leave them in place, but we're going to jump up with our ideas. And we're going to, you know, try to drive the economy here within our, um, within our department, right here in the city. You know, I think, uh, one of the things that I've really watched and paid close attention to is that, um, we've gone and we haven't gotten very far, uh, as far as economic development because, you know, I don't know that the leaders of these two partners have had previous economic development experience. And yet we keep holding on to them. And now we're going to bring, again, non-experts in to try to manage the nine million, possible nine million that we get. And so therefore, I thi- therefore I think that this leadership here on this dais owes the community to bring some experts to the room and that we should put out, because we can, we have the ability to fire our economic partners right now and replace them with some that work before we tried to take it on ourselves in-house and say, oh, well, we picked up this idea from here and not this idea from there without any experience. And this is, this could possibly work because, no, I think that we on this dais owe our community to bring experts into the room because it's their money and how we spend their money should be spent by experts and. Um, but I do trust that my community is going to see that without me, uh, at the voter box. And they're going to let us know exactly what they think. I trusted them in the two A and they did a fabulous job in knowing what was right for them, so. However you want to, if you want to take this to the va- ballot, I just would come with language and a, a commitment that was a lot more solid than, um, you know, the buzzwords. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
I just want to add that the buzzwords are just examples of what we've seen in other communities. The reason why we're not able to go out and get LOIs is because per the city's current prior criteria ordinance, we cannot incentivize retailers to come into our community. So there would be no reason why PEDCO or the city or PURA would ever go out to get an LOI to try to incentivize with half cent sales tax dollars, because that's not currently allowed. So I use those examples because those are large sales tax generators within other communities. Uh, we're not looking to change the definition of primary job, we're just looking to expand the half cent sales tax dollars and how they can be used. So I hear what you're saying, counselor, um, it's, those weren't intended to be words to the community saying city council didn't vote for this, so now we don't get these great amenities into our community. Those were large sales tax drivers, those are different stores that we hear. People drive up to Colorado Springs to go, um, and shop at like the Costco, like the Shields, like the Bass Pro Shop. Those are where those examples came from. I would hope that if this goes to the ballot and it does pass, that we are able to use funds to go and incentivize ways of being able to incentivize for these types of businesses would be for the city to purchase land, to subdivide and to cut the red, red tape to get them in here. These companies do not need cash incentives to come into our community, that's not what they're looking for. They're looking for speed to market.
Can I attempt to try to get back on track here? Um, I was going to add that if this plan has got so much merit and it's plausible, I can understand why we don't have, we have an expert like PEDCO that couldn't run this, this proposal. Have you guys worked with them? Have you talked to them? Have you sat down and saying, let's get this done?
Are you talking about the half cent?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez, this was, um, we have met with them for several months now, every other week, talking about these same very issues. When I brought this to you a couple of weeks ago, they had members from their team get up and say that although that they supported the way that the city was trying to expand, they thought that it was going to be such a dramatic change that they thought it should go to a vote of the people. And so that's why I'm bringing it to a vote of the people.
Okay.
So we have been working with them, we've been having conversations with them and we will continue to.
That's your progress with them now, where, where you at?
Um, we're doing exactly what they asked us to do, take it to the vote of the people, so that's what we're here presenting to you.
The other thing I'd like to add to, Counselor Gomez, is one of the requests that we had from PEDCO was for them to get their expert on the line and they, and that expert came to one of our meetings where we could go over these very topics and ask him, um, whether or not this was something that was doable within the city of Pueblo. So we, we have talked to PEDCO, we have negotiated with PEDCO, we have talked to their, their consultant and their expert that does their modeling for them. Um, so yes, we have, we have done that.
I'm going to wrap this up with Counselor Flores, please.
Uh, getting on the ballot has been something, uh, that has been in their model for the last eight elections. Uh, everyone knew even five years ago, when the last deal, it was that we were going to go to the ballot in the fourth year, that's been their model. The fact that they wanted to go to the ballot is not something that just happened. Uh, and that it was always going to go to the, the voters this November, there was no question about that. And this is even before you guys met with, with PEDCO.
The extension was, yes.
No, it's, it's always been on the table, but I'm telling you right now, the, the, the construct of what you did here is not what PEDCO was expecting. Okay, we, they were going to ballot, but a much, a much more compact idea than what you guys are presenting now. Uh, and getting back to, uh, uh, retail, this is tr- this has been tried before, th- th- this ballot issue has lost twice uh, when citizens wanted to tweak, uh, the, the half cent sales tax and bring in retail. So there's been two losses in, in the battle, uh, in, in the ballot, uh, over the last forty two years. And, and I'm saying that we have the potential again of, of seeing the voters vote this down if we don't all get on the same page. And by the way, uh, you know, PEDCO, PEDCO not only involves themselves with businesses that we incentivize, they were instrumental in helping, uh, PURA, uh, the city, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, the County of Pueblo, in, in, uh, in helping the city get ninety three million dollars in bonds to save our long rail, uh, mill. Uh, a lot of people are saying, we saved, we could have, we, we probably saved the whole mill, there was talk about them moving everything if they went to Texas or to Portland, uh, or to Vancouver, I think it was. Uh, so, so they were instrumental in, in helping us, I think, save our mill. Uh, we're one of the partners. They also are very involved in, in several expansions that are happening. One of them is train. And then lastly, they've been instrumental in retaining the existing businesses that we have in the community. So they do much more than just spend the half cent sales tax, they're, they're involved in lots of other things. Uh, but I just want to remind everybody, this is not a new idea about bringing retail into the picture. It's, it's happened twice over the last forty years and two times it lost at the ballot on the fourth year.
That, that wasn't specific to why it lost though. There was language within the ballot that talked about parks, public safety, PMJC that were listed, it was never listed as retail.
Well, you know, when you read between the lines, we were ne- that model never intended to incentivize retail because it doesn't have the same ke- kind of economic impact.
But that's not why it failed, that ballot language was not written to.
What year are you talking about?
It's the years that you're bringing up, the three years that it failed, it, it was talking about parks, it was talking about PMJC and it was talking about, um, city infrastructure.
What year was that?
I'm not sure what year it was, but that was.
We're talking twenty years ago. Yeah, it's still, okay, you know, we can have that, this argument, you know, for a long time about retail, but it just, um, has all the in, I mean, it just is not, um, a valid issue that I can support, not the way it's written right now.
Ask a question.
Okay, I'm going to, Councilman Latino, I'm going to close out on somebody.
Should we come back and, and adjourn? Because if we're not, and I want to make, I, I want to make a statement about four police officers that were extremely helpful to our community today.
Okay, we're going to start, we're just going to try to close out this conversation. Counselor Maestro, do you have anything?
You know, I'm in good, um, giving the voters every opportunity that is possible to vote, whether I believe in the issue or not. Um, we have to, we have, we as leaders in this community have to afford them the opportunity to vote for issues and we have to trust what they want, um, and what they think this community needs. Uh, but I do also support, uh, making sure that the ballot language is clear and concise. Um, and there aren't any, like I said, buzzwords added to it. Um, and so I just hope that, you know, we, um, decide what, the people decide, have the opportunity to decide in November at the ballot box.
Okay, and what we're going to do now is, Dennis, you're good? Okay, you can all, okay. And I'll close this out with Joe, but too, Joe, this is, go outside the web session, but I'll give you the last one.
Thank you, I appreciate that because we know about the bad, but we know about the good as it relates to law enforcement. And, and we have four officers respond today to a situation, that, it's heartbreaking, it's heartbreaking. We're talking about a little lady, who was, her house has been taken over pretty much by homes. Okay, and these officers responded, and I want to thank also Randy, former councilman, maybe Thurston for his help as, as relates to this situation. And the lady's name's Vicky Gatlin, she lives on Ethan Fountain. The officers were Mariana De Fusco, Corporal, Pueblo Police Department. Corporal Richard Romano, Pueblo Police Department. Sergeant Frank Rotato, Pueblo Police Department. And Officer Nikolai Hart. God bless him, thank you.
Okay, um.
Can I just say something really quick?
Sure.
Um, so, I just want to clear something up. This weekend I was forwarded a bunch of emails, social media stuff. I, I heard a radio show, um, that I was related to Steve Milwaukee and Angela Hiron. And that was news to me, I had no idea that I was related to them, so I wanted to clear up that, um, not related by blood, not related but by, by being my godparents. Um, I, I, I'm, was going to have to tell my actual godparents that I'm no longer theirs. They were going to be so sad because I'm such a great godchild.
We'll title that clarification. Counsel, are you difference, Counsel Flores, you did, you like?
Mr. Chairman, I go along, I make a motion, move on to executive session for the focus of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS, section twenty four, dash six, dash four, two, prime four, prime E. And following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Instructing SIRSA with respect to settlement negotiations of pending clients.
Is there a second? Thank you. Oh, isn't fair. Okay, we're adjourned to the executive session. You're a bit like a little student.
Thank you for this question. Marissa Lisa, Marissa, Marissa Stoller.
Yes.
We're gonna close this thing out, okay? Uh do can I use a gap?
Yeah.
Really?
Turn on, turn on your mic.
The reception is closed and adjourned. Did you see this? You see that? Wait, Bruce?